Good evening. Welcome to the August 14th, 2017 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Craig Lynch will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Craig.
Father, we have a calling. We thank you this day and the blessings you give us today and hope unusual blessings from your honor, your glory. Father, we pray for, pray for our country especially. We pray as we pray for the unrest and the hopeless situation. We pray for, pray for good heads and hearts to give us through this situation. It's trying times for our country. We pray that you will, you will intervene against this. Also, in the agenda situation, the lives need to change, hearts need to change. Pay for the billions, Father. We pray that somebody will intervene against this situation. Just pray that you will, we know, we know your love is here. We ask for your help. Pray that the light should be on in this planning commission, with the decisions we make. And pray that we push past and fight some of these problems.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Aberwater. Lee Vogel. David Jones. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion. Charlotte P. Mike Vought. Jeff Phillips.
President.
Have a question.
Thank you, Gail. We need to approve the minutes or read and approve the minutes of our April the 10th and July 10th Planning Commission meeting. I'll call on our vice chair, Mike Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed those minutes. Both sets have approved those, so I'd submit those to the archives for approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April 10th and July 10th. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Then the motion carries. A quick announcement. As you know, at this six o'clock meeting last month, long-term planning commissioner and county commissioner, Will Jordan, resigned. The staff has put together a plaque recognizing his service, and on behalf of the Planning Commission, that plaque will be presented to Will Thursday night before the community and the full county commission. Speaking of Will, we have Pettis Reed out in the audience. Pettis, you stand up and Pettis will take Will's place on the Planning Commission, and he will be installed this Thursday night also before the full planning, county commission. Welcome back, Pettis. Any items withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir. We have a full slate tonight.
Ready to go. Item six is new business. Six A is public hearings that are scheduled, rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. Six A one, the item number is seventeen dash eight zero one nine, Glass Family Revocable Living Trust by David Glass. The location is fifteen twenty-seven Compton Road. Commission district is two. The county commissioner is Steve Piercy. The size of the site is approximately three acres, tax map sixty-eight. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS commercial services. Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, Commission members. The applicant is proposing, as Mr. Chairman stated, to zone this property to commercial services. They don't have necessarily specific plans, but they did mention in their application that they have one of three possibilities. First being a classic car restoration business. Motor vehicle repair establishments do fall under the automotive repair and servicing activity classification, which are allowed by right in the commercial services zone. The applicant has included a basic concept plan, which you can see on your agenda packets, which are on your iPads, but it's nothing that, it's really just a couple of locations for possible buildings, nothing really that the applicant would be bound by, by any means. A second possibility may be many warehouses, which are classified as general personal services. Again, they are allowed in a commercial zone, but specifically many warehouses, self-storage facilities are only allowed by special exception to the Board of Zoning Appeals, so they're not a use by right. The other possibility would be just for speculative purposes, and of course, any development would have to adhere to the requirements of the zoning ordinance, should that be the case. As you can see from the GIS map, Mike has the site highlighted, you can see that there is existing commercial zoning not too far from the property to the east, roughly about seven hundred feet. There's also across the street and just a little to the south, I guess that's the southeast, you see there's an existing electric substation there on the property. It is the zone for residential purposes, but the use of the property has been that way for some time. Plus, a little further at the corner there, again, you can see some additional commercial zoning on the property as well. Access, parking, landscaping, performance standards, all of those, if this were approved, would have to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Of course, if this were to be approved, any new development would have to be done through a site plan, engineered site plan, which would have to be brought back to the Planning Commission for their review and approval. This property is located within a general urban character area, which does contemplate non-residential uses. Compton Road is a heavily traveled arterial road and eventually will be five-laned at some point in the future. No concrete plans for that now. Of course, that's something, I believe that being a state route would also have to have state funding as well. But again, there are commercially zoned properties located in close proximity to this site, as well as an electric substation. Concerning these factors, staff did recommend approval of the request. We did receive some phone calls regarding this. I know that there are some in the community that have some concerns about this request. Some of them may be here tonight to speak. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff at this time? We'll get to you. Any questions for staff? If not, are we ready for our public hearing?
Any sinkholes located on the property or located on the adjacent property?
I believe there's a, no, I believe there's a little bit of a drawl that goes through the middle of the property, but there's a little bit of a hill here and right at Betty Ford, there's a little bit of a crest of a hill as well. No streams that I could see, no wetlands, and I think it was out of the flood zone as well.
Probably won't affect it. I'm just curious, is the cemetery full or is it, they still accept burials there? Do you not, does anyone know?
I'm not sure if that's still accepting internments or not.
This time we'll declare a public hearing open for seventeen dash eight zero one nine. It might be appropriate if someone representing the applicant is here to speak and kind of let us know what they have in mind. Is someone, the applicant or someone representing the applicant here? If you'd come forward, please. State your name and address for the record.
David Glass.
Okay.
My name is David Glass. We purchased the property about six months ago. Didn't really know what we were going to do with the property. As we got into it, the home that's on the property is in very bad condition and it's a, the foundation is all messed up, so we were looking at other options, spoke with quite a few people, and determined that probably the best use of this property is a commercial service type use, which would allow a lot of different things that would be beneficial to the community. One that's not been mentioned is the possibility of a nursery. So I don't know if there's any questions for me in particular, but we're basically just trying to figure out the best use of the property. The home will probably be destroyed or moved away. Either way, on how this meeting goes tonight, but we're hoping to be able to use the property in a way that actually benefits the community.
Questions for Mr. Glass? Thank you. Now, anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Did he say, my name's Martha Allen, thirty-four, thirty-six, Betty Ford Road.
Cool. If you would come around and speak into the microphone, please, Ms. Eldred.
Okay. Did I hear him say that this could be a nursery? Did I? Did he say that?
He mentioned.
Okay. But that's not allowed on here.
Mentioned it.
That's not allowed on here. It says no.
Okay, well, hold on.
Doug, could you give a list of possibilities in the?
Yes, if you'd just bear with me a second.
If that doesn't break protocol.
It's on the backside.
Depending on the type of nursery that he's talking about, he's talking about like a retail, right, I understand, I understand. Let me look at a couple of things here. Nursery, retail nurseries would be classified as a general retail trade, which would be allowed in that zone. Wholesale nurseries are plant and forest, fall under plant and forest nurseries. And as you have stated correctly, that would not be permitted, but if it's a retail nursery, he could do that. Now, to answer Mr. Vought's question, as far as different uses that are allowed, the zoning ordinance, and of course, you have a copy of Appendix B, there's a wide range. This is not the most, this is not the least restrictive of the commercial zones. We have three commercial zones. Of the three, this one's kind of in the middle. Commercial neighborhood is the most restrictive, commercials general being the least restrictive. But it allows for a variety of activities, animal care, veterinarian, automotive repair and servicing, as we've discussed, general personal services, again, as we discussed, consumer repair services, construction, sales and service, entertainment and amusement services indoor, a variety of things of that nature. All some other things under the community facilities activities, what are we allowed, such as administrative services, community assembly, small and medium, which would be like church gatherings, things like that. Community education, cultural recreational services, those type uses. Now, the uses that wouldn't be permitted, we start getting to the heavier industrial type uses, no industrial uses are allowed in a commercial services zone. Does that answer your question?
Would a daycare or a nursery be allowed?
A retail nursery? Now, you're talking, are you talking like a daycare, like, yes, yes, I believe it would. Childcare type facilities are classified as, let's see, childcare, family group, personal group care facilities. Those are allowed by right in that zone. Yes, just a regular child nursery, if that's what you're talking about.
A nursery.
Okay, well, that's a good point. If that's what he was talking about, that would be allowed, but so would a retail nursery like trees and those kind of things would be.
Did you say we could allow a vet office to handle there?
Veterinarian office services would be allowed. Yes, ma'am.
That's allowed?
It is allowed, yes.
And also, somebody asked about the cemetery, is it cool or not? I know, because I live there. It is not cool. And the reason is because it's not, because there's water up there and it's engineer and everything. Anyway, first thing I did when I got my letter, first thing I did when I got my letter was I went out and got my tape measurer, and I measured how far it is from my house to this property. Now, I bought this house, I have a lovely backyard with birds and bird baths and water features and quiet. This property is thirty-eight feet and six inches from my house. So needless to say, and I understand too that there are properties down on, Las Casas or Ninety-Six, on the corners, there, these are busy intersections, and when they rezoned that down there, I didn't have a problem with that, because they need a service station on that road, because it's busy. But this is not, it's not on Ninety-Six. And also, if you look at all the new development that they have done on Compton Road, they have, I don't know who you have, if you've been there, but there is no commercial businesses there. They're all new, beautiful residential homes. Another thing that I thought about is, once you open this up, this particular property, once you open this up, how can you tell, or you know, it's just going to be opened up for everybody? How much time do I have? I gotta hurry. And also, it's my understanding that money can never be the reason for rezoning. It's for the best use of the land and the best for the community. And I'm sure you guys probably agree with that. The change in this zoning is typical also of spot zoning, and I have a thing here that says the change in zoning is typical spot zoning contrary to Rutherford County's own zoning laws. So maybe there are a few things here I want to read. If I run out of town, just time, just stop me. Courts have defined spot zoning as the process of singling out a small parcel of land for use classification totally different, totally different from the surrounding area, for the benefit of the owner and such property, and to the detriment of other owners. To be considered a spot zone, the property in most cases must meet the following criteria. The spot zone allows use for, uses land, uses inconsistencies with those allowed in the community. The spot zone would confer a special benefit on the individual property owner not commonly enjoyed by the owners of similar property. The existence of spot zones conflict with the policies in the text of the master plan. There is no relation to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the zoning violates equal protection because it arbitrarily favors a single landowner. The parcel in question is a small three-acre tract surrounded by other areas zoned for residential purposes containing a number of homes in an established neighborhood. The adjoining tracts of land are used as residence consistent with the residential zoning classification. Rezoning for commercial operations of any type would change the character of the neighborhood and cause undue harm to the owners of both contiguous and surround properties. Current residents purchase their homes with the understanding that the area would remain a residential neighborhood, and of course, I have to tell you, that was, I considered, when I moved here, I considered other areas, but I just chose that one just because I wanted to live in the country. Sitting a commercial building in the vicinity of a residential neighborhood affects existing properties both economically and aesthetically, and interrupts the peaceful enjoyment of homeowners. And there are other adequate number of parcels on Las Casas already zoned for commercial development. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name's Beth Wright. My name's Beth Wright, and I'm her neighbor. I live on Betty Ford Road, and I was alarmed to see the zoning change sign go up, because we bought our house a couple of years ago with the understanding that that was going to stay a residential area. We just live a couple of lots down from Compton Road on Betty Ford Road, and I am very concerned about changing the zoning to a commercial zoning, because that's going to affect all of us that live in that area. And I'm very concerned for this lady right here, because this property backs up directly to hers. And when she bought her house, that house has been there probably a similar amount of time, it's residential. And so now, you're proposing to flip that over to commercial, and how is that going to affect her quality of life, and how's that going to affect her property value and my property value? I'll tell you, I paid a lot of money for my house, and part of what drew me and what, why I paid a premium to live on Betty Ford Road is because of its beautiful, beautiful, beautiful residential peaceful area. And I can appreciate this man's dilemma. I can see why that would be difficult, but I don't think that it's right to rezone that to commercial when it's going to affect all of the rest of us that live in that area detrimentally.
Anyone else?
My name is David Hackett. Life and I lived at fourteen eleven Compton Road. Our property goes up Sanford Drive, it's in a hill shape, and then it fronts over on Betty Ford Road, which from the center of Betty Ford to the property that's in question tonight is roughly about two hundred feet. So that's my location. First of all, I'd like to say I appreciate the opportunity to speak to everyone tonight, and I'll try to make it very brief. My wife and I have lived at fourteen eleven Compton Road. This October will be forty-six years. This has always been a neighborhood to raise your kids in, quiet neighborhood, everybody pretty well knows everybody, they know who comes and goes, and of course, when we moved there, Compton Road was about as wide as Betty Ford Road. Of course, they widened the road in eighty-one, and of course, I don't have to tell you all how much traffic's on there now. And my wife and I are concerned, you put a place of business down there, it's going to create more traffic. And like the gentleman spoke a while ago, in the long-range plan, it is scheduled to widen out to five lanes, but who knows when that'll be. And this has always been a residential neighborhood, and it was residential when we moved there, and we would like to see it stay that way. We don't want to see it commercialized, because once you, like the lady spoke a while ago, once you open it up to let one person commercialize his property, then how are you going to say no? If I come along and say, well, my property on Betty Ford, I want to open it up commercial, are you going to tell me no? I got five, you know, so you can't really tell me no if you say yes to him. So we would like to see it remain a residential neighborhood and not a mixed neighborhood, because people that are buying into this neighborhood out there, they're buying into a residential neighborhood. The gentleman that sold his house right down Betty Ford Road last year, kind of across the road from the lady that just spoke, his house bought four hundred thousand dollars. And it's not, you know, there's some real nice homes out there, so when you open it up to a mixed neighborhood, then your property value is going to go down, and if someday one of my kids want to build a home over there on that property of Betty Ford, I don't want them to have to come out the end of their driveway and see a commercial piece of property across the street in front of them. So sincerely hope tonight, whenever you decide to vote on this, you'll vote to keep it a neighborhood and not a, you know, keep it residential and not mix it up. Anybody got any questions? Anyone ask me? I've lived out there long enough that when they had the old Betty Ford Bridge, Stone River got high enough that it went over that bridge. And you can ask Cherry Compton about that. He's been flooded out more than once. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name's Ellen Simon, thirteen eight nine Compton Road.
Did you get that? Did you say that again?
What's the last name? One three eight nine Compton Road, this name is Simon.
Thank you.
Been there for seventeen years.
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
Simon, no S. My name's Ellen Simon, and I live on Compton Road, and I've been there for seventeen years. My husband and I, when we moved here, we wanted a residential area. We wanted to be out in the country. If we wanted to be around commercial property, we would have moved in the county, into the city somewhere, not in the county. That's what the county is for, to be private, to be by yourself, to be with your neighbors, not with a whole bunch of people traveling up and down your road, knocking on your door, saying, well, where's this farm store? Or where's this automotive store? We don't want it. We want to keep our neighborhood the way it is. We know who comes, we know who goes, we know who belongs there. We don't need a bunch of strangers coming into our neighborhood and telling us what we can do and what we can't do. If you sell to one person, you can't tell somebody else. No, you cannot have a commercial property there. You've already done it. How are you going to justify telling somebody else if they want a commercial property? How are you going to tell them no? You can't. So everybody that lives out there, that has a private home, that wants their peace and quiet, that wants to keep everything granted, status quo, it's not moving forward. Well, we would rather not move forward and keep it the way it is, because it's nice, it's peaceful, it's quiet. We know what goes on. We know what, what people want. We don't want commercial property out there. Put it out on the main highway, put it out on Las Casas. That's where the commercial property is, not in a family neighborhood. Thank you.
My name's Jason Loftus, and I actually own thirty-four twenty-six Betty Ford Road, which is probably the property that it would affect mostly, and I'm sure everyone has personal opinions about it, but the common sense approach is, I think Mike asked if there was some sinkholes and stuff on that property. There is, per Randy Jordan, I've only owned that property for about three years, but on the back side, which would be on the north side of that cemetery, there with a tree, there is a depression there that has over the years been filled constantly and cannot do any grave sites there. And of course, from a topical view, you really can't tell that, but as it follows to the property line of the subject being talked about, there's a cluster of trees there. That is really the bowl of that property. To the east side of that property there, to the right corner of the screen, and then to our property adjoining the cemetery, that is the bottom of the bowl, and obviously, when they built the house back in seventy there, they built it on one of the highest points, second highest point's the right rear corner. So one of my concerns would be that if whatever it would be zoned to, there will be a water intrusion problem. We have water problems coming from that side, and we also have water problems coming down Compton Road because of the ditch line. County's been out there and redone some of the ditches, but all the water from the ditch comes off the cemetery and then crosses my property and it crosses Melville's property because it's the bowl. It doesn't go on down Betty Ford Road, it doesn't cross the high spot and go back towards the river. Obviously, elevation's there, so one can see that. So in any zoning changes, commercial or whatever, you put asphalt, you do that, you have, you're directing that specific water source, and it's going to come back on my property. My son lives at that property. So I've bought property before that sometimes I'm not sure what's going to be done with it, but I don't haul off and rezone it. I kind of have a little bit better idea, so I don't see the, the need to rezone that other than residential. They can split that property up, pay for two houses on it. I looked at that property when it was for sale, the second day it come on the market, it was priced at a hundred thirty-five thousand. I personally, the house, the gentleman obviously bought it, knows that the house wasn't worth anything, and I walked away from it. So I don't particularly know what he paid for it, but residential of the individual can do much better from a residential standpoint than to redevelop it from a commercial standpoint. I don't really see the benefit of the surrounding homeowners, the community, or anything of that nature, since there's not a specific use for the zoning of commercial. So, thanks.
Seeing no one else rising to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
I'm kind of concerned about a lack of specificity with this CS zoning in an area that is predominantly residential, and there are some very good commercial sites close by, granted, but you know, this may be a bit premature for that area until you see a little bit more commercial growth down at the intersection working that way. I'm just not sure that I can support it unless somebody can, can sway me otherwise. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Second, to deny, to deny the rezoning request for item seventeen dash eight zero one nine.
The benefit of the neighbors and the applicant, I do think it's important, at least for me as a planning commissioner, excuse me, to have a better idea of what's going in. I know once we rezone it, there's a multiple I know once we rezone it, there's a multiple, you know, number of uses it can be used for, but I think it's incredibly hard to ask neighbors to be able to support speculative zoning. And so I think if he were to come back with a more specific plan, maybe something that, you know, the community could support, I don't think that this is a forever no. I do think Compton Road is a major road, that we will probably see development, commercial development, to this point, at some point in the future. But I completely support Jim's line of thinking, that I just think it's premature.
Ready to vote? We have a motion and a second to deny the request on item 17-A019, Glass Family Revocable Living Trust. All those in favor of that motion to deny, please say aye. Any opposition? The motion to deny carries. This will be scheduled for a public hearing, a final public hearing, before the Rutherford County Commission on Thursday, September the 14th, 6:30 p.m. in this courtroom. Thank you for your attendance and participation. Item 6A217-A020, Orica USA by Julian Smith, I hope I pronounced that right, location 7265 Shelbyville Pike, Commission District is six. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 232 acres. Four and one-half of those acres are requested to be rezoned. Tax map 171. Existing zoning is light industrial. Proposed zoning is HI heavy industrial. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a rezoning request that we don't get too terribly often, rezoning to heavy industrial. The applicant is proposing to rezone, as Mr. Phillips stated, approximately four and a half acres of property that's already zoned for light industrial purposes to heavy industrial for explosive storage. There's a letter that's been submitted by the applicant, which I did include with the agenda packet, which explains the reasoning for choosing this proposed site. The applicant has also submitted other supporting documentation, which can be found on your iPads, and we also have some of those same photos on the big screen if we need to put them up there. According to the rezoning application, the site will be split into two separate areas. The first area will have two structures, a magazine that will house the material and a secure building. The other will be tanks that hold materials to be distributed into trucks for delivery to job sites, which is essentially what this is used for, is for explosives, for developing subdivisions and whatnot, as I understand it. The second area will contain no greater than four tractor-trailers that will provide secure storage for the explosive agents. The Department of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, ATF, have minimum distances, which these materials must be from each other, as well as from the nearest railroad houses, which is one of the main reasons the applicant chose this site to begin with. There's also barricades that are required as well. Access to the property would be directly from Shelbyville Pike. The property does back up to Christiana-Fosterville Road, however, there will be no access there. Of course, the railroad backs up to the tracks, or to the property there right near the road. So there will be no access onto Christiana-Fosterville Road. The applicant's proposing to utilize the existing access for 7265 Shelbyville Pike, which is the larger, accesses the larger part of the property, and not the existing drive to the north, which accesses a cellular tower, which is located on the property as well. Any improvements to the access and proposed parking areas would need to be shown on the site plan. Of course, site plan would be required for this, it'd be built to county standards. Heavy industrially-zoned properties are required to install a type III buffer adjacent to a residentially-zoned property. The landscape plan, again, will be required along with the site plan. As you can see from the aerial photos, this is a very, very heavily treed site. Actually, the limits of the light industrial zoning, as you see on the map, are not the limits of the property. The property goes further to the north and is zoned residential, low density. So quite frankly, a lot of the existing material on the site is going to remain undisturbed and would act as a very substantial buffer to the property and to the use in question. Performance standards specifically address this kind of materials as well. Specifically, the zoning ordinance states, and this is directly out of the ordinance, "The use and/or storage of any toxic, detonable, or explosive materials and any fire hazard solids, liquids, or gases shall be in strict accordance with current NFPA code as adopted by the county. Adequate precautions shall be taken to protect against any negative off-site impacts of any hazardous or toxic materials released using best available technology. Any such release shall be a violation of this ordinance punishable by, as provided by law." We also, when we go over our zoning requests, we have the fire chief in attendance at these meetings. I conversed with him via email, he wasn't able to make it here tonight, but when I inquired to him about if he had anything he wanted me to relay to the commission tonight, he stated that the only thing that fire needs is a 20-foot wide driveway back to the site. He said this is a highly regulated use by ATF, and it will have to be built according to their specifications. The fire code calls for setbacks from roads and highways. This is out in the middle of the woods, so we don't see, we don't foresee a problem with that. So he has been contacted, the fire chief has been contacted, and has kind of put his two cents in here for this application as well. Again, one of the reasons the applicant chose this subject property is the lack of surrounding structures. You can see from some of the documents that were submitted with the applicant's materials, they're about a half mile from the nearest structure. Some uses due to their nature are just better separated from more densely populated areas. We have consulted with the county's fire chief, we just gave that report. Considering all these factors, staff feels that the proposed site, already being zoned for industrial purposes, is probably more appropriate than other areas in the county that could be found. The applicant has also advised that all federal, state, and local standards and ordinance will also have to be followed should his application be approved. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present, they can answer any questions as well.
Questions just there? This is right next to the, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's basically what it is. He has been out doing that for quite some time, and he's gotten permission to do it, so it's, that was something that was done under the old zoning resolution.
Questions for staff at this time?
Do we currently have a place in the county where we store explosives like this?
Not that I'm aware of, and I have not dealt with one since I've been here.
I have friends in the excavating business that used to keep their license up. This stuff is so heavily regulated now that they, he has given up his, he had a half-inch steel container with half-inch thick walls on it that he had to store it in. It's very, very heavily regulated. I think anything that would satisfy ATF would probably satisfy us, or more than satisfy us. I don't know yet.
Other questions for staff? No, I'll declare the public hearing open for item 17-A020, Orica USA. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, this piece of property, we talk about piece of property being landlocked. Well, this piece of property is tree-locked. It's a great location for this, so I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion and a second to approve with all staff comments. Any other discussion?
The applicant present? Okay.
No, I thought he was, I'm sorry. Yeah, he is present.
Doug, I have a simple question. How does these distances affect, are there any neighboring properties in close enough proximity that this is going to restrict their future ability to build a home or anything?
From our standpoint, from the county's zoning standpoint, no. There's no regulation. Now, I'm not, I can't say that as far as ATF is concerned, but as far as anything from the ordinance, if somebody else in this area wanted to develop their property in a manner, I mean, we would just make the mention that, yes, this is an approved use for this property, but as far as any specific distance criteria in our zoning ordinance, no, there's no effect there.
Please, I have a question, Commissioner, for the applicant to make a presentation or to answer some questions. Is it Mr. Smith? Are you here?
Yes.
Would you please come forward?
This, I'll be GRC, Doug, either one of you. This will all be label rock out crop for several feet around it, I would assume, right?
I believe you're correct, but Mike's going to pull up his layer here.
Do you suspect an amount of two years?
Yeah. It's all, yes, sir, Mr. Vaughn, it is pretty much all Gladeville Rock.
To address your question, any property that would be sold in the future around this, or, you know, within a thousand foot of that, would simply restrict what we could do. So the proposal of the amount we would store currently is just based upon the ownership of the land and the houses and things around it. So if somebody were to build a house closer that was on another person's property or their property, then it would affect us in a downward manner, and we would have to adjust the amount that we would store or could store based upon that. So this is just, it's not a permanent thing that guarantees you, that says this is what you can store forever and ever.
And this is purely storage, no explosions are expected?
It's a distribution, so I work for Worker USA. It's the world's largest explosive company. We're an Australian public firm, and we operate 60 or so storage facilities like this east of St. Louis to service quarry and construction market. Our nearest one to here, we have one in the Goodletsville-Millerfield area. And actually, one reason that we chose to do this area is because of the recent expansion and the growth spurt, if you will, to really to lessen the amount of miles that we travel on the road carrying product, which we feel is probably the most dangerous thing that we do every day. We're already servicing this area on a regular basis, bringing it down on vehicles, and we're just trying to operate a little more efficiently, add jobs to the area, become a good company member of the community, and this is a very remote area. Actually, one of our customers operating a borrow pit on the areas utilizing explosives, such as this gentleman said here, the BATFE storage requirements, along with IMCA and OSHA and every other agency that regulates us, is extremely, we're an extremely highly regulated industry. The facilities that we have to store certain types of this in are just about bulletproof and unbreakable. It's a core inch steel hooded padlocks where they can't be cut. It strictly says the minimum distance, not just from houses and roads based on the amount we store, but also from each particular type of product. Sometimes we even have to barricade within a facility between one product to the other.
And how many employees will you have on site?
I mean, again, it's a distribution point, so it's an in-and-out type thing. We're going to, we'll make that decision in the future as far as balancing our workload that from Goodletsville that would service whatever part of the city, you know, and based upon future current business growth. We have 23 employees at our Goodletsville site right now. You know, I can envision from very early in the game, half of those operating out of this area.
Do you have any way to predict how many trucks you'll have in and out daily?
As far as ours in and out, probably about two tractor-trailer loads a week of inbound freight. And our trucks, you know, with the 10 employees, would be probably four box fan type vehicles, you know, not tractor-trailers, much like a F-750-type box fan, like a Mini UPS, if you will, you know, dropping three or four different deliveries a day.
This is all for y'all, your company's use, or do you distribute to smaller?
Well, we distribute. I mean, that's what we do, we distribute, but we take it out, and just like I think somebody said, the regulations have forced people that can't comply with them to give them up, and, or they've chosen to give them up and turn it over to what we're supposed to do as a living, and the experts in. So a lot of the market, we take it out, we drop it off, they use what they use that day, and we come back around and pick it up and return it to a secure location versus, I think there was a question up here, I'm sure there is storage overnight somewhere in your county in a small three-by-three or four-by-four type box, because it is allowed, and, you know, obviously, the smaller quantities could be much closer. You can be within a couple hundred feet of a house with some things if it's in a smaller quantity, so I'm sure there's...
There are regulations with those small quantities, there's certain distance of property lines and all that.
From a house, yes, yes. Yeah, the storage is very strictly, yeah, it's very strictly, it's very strict as far as, or specific as far as the amount you store, distance to nearest roads, passenger railways, and inhabited buildings.
Grab the actual safety of storage, what's the security going to be for the property?
It's a, we don't, by law, we don't have to fence or have a secure, security guard. Some states require a kind of a GPS-type, I guess, device placed on magazines for entry and exit. We have proposed to potentially fence the area, you know, we discussed some of the zoning regulations previously with the barbed wire fence, which I know applies more to the cattle-type storage and things like that, which we did fence it. It's typically a six or seven foot high with the three strands of inward-facing barbed wire, but, you know, it goes against the zoning ordinance, but, yes, yes, yes. But at this point, it's, the facility, the buildings, they're really not buildings, but the things themselves require even a certain type of shackle padlock, 7/16 diameter that can't be cut, so it's, the security basically is within the facility itself, that we potentially could fence it.
Have you ever had any kind of a breach?
Sure, yeah. I mean, it happens sometimes, yeah. Hasn't happened at our Goodletsville site, but, you know, you watch the news, you know, a thief, a thief can try anything. Normally, what we have, if we have any type of issue, or in our industry, when I say "we," not just "Orca," but within our industry, is an employee theft. But our inventory regulations are also obviously down to the ounce and the piece, and we can be spot-checked anytime by the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms.
Are you penalized by them or fined by them if you have a breach?
They don't have fineing privilege, they pull your license and put you out of business. Yep.
Beth, is any of this material liquid, in a liquid form?
In the one round bin, I don't know if you have a picture there, but...
Hila?
Yeah, yeah, we, in the one, it's ammonium nitrate, it's an industrial-grade ammonium nitrate, just like a farmer would have, you know, out, and then standing next to it is a, it's an emulsion, so it's a semi-liquid, but those two products are not actually explosives. You could stand them out here across the street and not be regulated.
So the EPA, do you have that, have you, in case you...
Not on those, no, but it is a hazardous material, it's an oxidizer, not an explosive. Yep, but we are regulated by the EPA.
Doug, this is going to be way out in right field, but I'm going to state it anyway.
Can you, that's what I was about to say, about that name?
Yes.
For what?
Adult entertainment.
Okay. Well, I'd invite any of you to go on Orica's website and see what we do and...
Well, let's just say...
Time's got tough, and out of your four and a half acres, you wanted to...
Would you, can we ask you to sign something that would not be...
Well, what I can, actually, I can, I think I can kind of assuage some of your concerns there, let me just, that thought occurred to me as well, so...
There's a lot of soul shots, I mean, there's...
No. It's all label rock. We do hire female employees if they want to go to work for us.
As far as adult entertainment-type uses are concerned, yes, heavy industrial is one of the uses that is allowed in that zone. However, one of the requirements, the distance requirements for adult entertainment is that no adult entertainment activity shall be located within 1,000 feet of a residentially or institutionally-zoned district. It's zoned surrounded by RL, so that would automatically disqualify this site from that type of a use. So there's no reason to even worry about it at that point. type of a use, so there's no reason to even worry about it at that point.
My hotel name, right? Yeah.
I had just one more question, and it's, let's say there were some sort of an accident that happened on site, should we be more concerned about hazardous materials like you just described, or would it be more, you know, an explosion, would there be fire prevention things we need to be concerned about?
The first thing we do, and we haven't did it yet because we hadn't reached the point, but the first thing we do is reach out to local fire, police, emergency responders, and we have very specific programs that, and signage, this will be an incredibly signed property that blue, orange, and yellow zone on where to fight fires, where not to fight fires. We do local training with most of those type of people purposely, so it, and again, one of the reasons that the distances are specified by the BATFE is to protect from that.
But, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I like the fact that it's a hidden area, it's an ideal area, but, back to the security and the access, the signs that are required for you, and this may all be site plan questions, but are they required at the major highway, or would they be more localized to that site? Because, you know, it's one of those things you don't really wanna bring attention to, but where are you kind of required?
Would the what?
Be it the signage or, or that signage you're talking about?
The signage we would have at local highway would just be our name on a sign directly to the site. Exactly, yeah, this is, this is well within the property boundary of, of the 270, 270 acres, I think the whole property. Yes, it's almost in the middle, if you will, of 270.
Nestled between two hills, it looks like, it looks like an ideal location.
Yeah, the only signage on the road would be a, whatever the regulation would say, with a four-by-six type sign with our name on it with a paro.
And just, I know at the site plan stage we'll deal with this too, but that does require a heavier access road through there as well, Doug, I guess.
I mean, the road would have to be able to meet our county requirements, yes, and again, the county fire chief, you know, the road would have to be able to handle...
He said what, 20 feet?
Yeah, fire traffic, so, a fire fire engine, so it'd have to be able to do that.
Okay.
Well, I was just gonna say, they couldn't have picked a better spot. I mean, it's near the base of a ridge line, it's in a remote area, you've got a quarry on the one side and a ridge on the other side, it's, it's a couple thousand feet from any house, so, I mean, it's, it's a pretty good spot.
And we're limited, what we're proposing, I mean, we, we can't expand and add storage because of the regulations that's, that's in place unless, unless the property owner were to buy property around him.
For the volume of product you're proposing to store there, you're at the distances you need right now, the, what, the half mile?
Yeah, that's the maximum, that's the maximum we could store based on the situation that exists.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you. I apologize, Commissioners, for not bringing him up here earlier, I had the impression that he wasn't here, but thank you. I think we have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions? As I said, we have a motion and a second to approve item 17-A020, Orca USA. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Opposition? Motion to approve carries, thank you. 6-3, item 17, I will go ahead and say, Mr. Smith, that this will also come before the full county commission on September 14th, 6:30 PM, right here in this courthouse. 6A3, item 17-A021, Melinda Tantum? Leave it. Thank you, appreciate that. Location, 2415 Blackman Road, Commission District 20, the county commissioner is Trey Gooch. Size of the site is approximately one acre, tax map 78, existing zoning is RM, residential medium density, proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant, as you stated, is proposing to zone the subject property to commercial services. To my knowledge, the applicant doesn't have any specific plans for the property at this time, and no concept plan was submitted as part of this application, so it does appear to be for speculative purposes. There are other non-residentially zoned properties located directly across the street from the subject property, as you can see on your iPads as well as the map on the screen. A special exception for an automated restoration business was approved for property at 2400 Blackman Road back in 2015, right across the street. Staff has also included a Murfreesboro city zoning map as part of your agenda packets for this area, which does show commercial zoning across Interstate 840 and park zoning adjacent to the subject property. That property that's surrounding the subject site is zoned park, that's gonna be the location of the new Westside Park inside the city of Murfreesboro, so that property is within the city limits. My understanding is the city did try to purchase this property, but negotiations, they weren't able to come to any kind of an agreement, so at this point, it still remains the applicant's property. Access to the property is and will continue to be from Blackman Road, any improvements to the access or parking is, will need to be shown on a site plan that would be done. In addition, right-of-way along the subject property is within the city limits of Murfreesboro. Any work in the right-of-way of Blackman Road must be approved by the city engineer. We did contact the city regarding this request, being that it is surrounded by the park property, proposed park property. You'll notice in the staff report, several comments that the city staff had made regarding any improvements to the area, traffic studies, things like that. Landscaping commercially zoned properties, especially CS, would be required to install a type-two buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. Although the surrounding property, again, is located within the city limits of Murfreesboro and zoned for park, staff would still anticipate a type-two buffer should this property be developed separately from that. Again, a landscape plan would have to be submitted with that site plan. Performance standards would also apply to this property. This is located within the general urban character area, again, it does contemplate non-residential type uses. Blackman Road is identified as an urban arterial in the county's comprehensive plan. With the development of the Westside Park, traffic will likely increase in this area. There is also surrounding zoning consistent with what the applicant is asking for. We're comfortable with this request for either commercial services, or if you felt more comfortable with commercial neighborhood, being that that's the predominant zoning in the area, from the county standpoint, I think we'd be comfortable with that as well. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present.
Questions for staff before we conduct our public hearing? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open for item 17-A021. Is the applicant here, and would you please come forward? Name and address, please. Mindy, thank you. If you would, kind of give us an overview of what you have planned for this property?
Yeah, so, I've owned the property since 1995, and of course, a lot of it's happened in the area to that property. My neighbors across the street, of course, have, there's commercial, the places on the side of the T there, Burtonob, Manson Pike, and at Blackman Road there, that's commercial right now as well. We wanted to have it commercial under consideration of maybe having something as, somewhere to eat, something, you know, that we could maybe do in the future, and so, with all of the planning with the park and everything, we thought that that would be a good area as well, maybe sometime in the future, we didn't have any immediate plans for it today. The property has been a rental property for us since 2009, and so, we currently rent the property and have good renters in there. We're seeking just that commercial zoning, again, for future, for future use, and so, that's why we didn't put a plan with the property today.
Have any questions for Ms. Trantham?
Do you have any plan, you don't have any plans at this point to do anything yourself? If you do anything, it would be something you would probably sell, or are you just still up in there to be sure what you're doing?
We really just wanted to leave our options open, so, me and my husband have four girls, and they're all grown, and so, you know, we thought, I mean, we've sat around the table at night and talked about, you know, all kinds of different things that, you know, that we could do with the park there and everything. I mean, it's gonna be 21 baseball fields, so, you know, there's all kinds of different things that people, we could make use of that for, and to help even the community there, so, but to answer your question, we don't have any substantial plans today.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Chairman, Doug, did the city agree that our buffering would be good for the park?
I'm sorry, did they agree that, can you say that, I didn't quite hear what you said?
Did they agree that our requirements for buffering around this property as commercial would be sufficient for the park?
Well, I mean, unfortunately, it is what it is. I mean, even if they don't like it, I can't make them do more than what the ordinance would require. But to more specifically answer your question, they didn't really indicate one way or the other, as far as that goes. They didn't really express any kind of major concerns beyond that which I included in your agenda packets, as far as some of the requirements and different things that they would probably look at, as far as dedication of right-of-way, traffic studies, intersection improvements at Blackman, Burtonob, and Manson Pike possibly, but, yeah. Since the right-of-way's in the city, it makes it a little more difficult, as far as, I say difficult, it's really not the right word, but it's not just the county they'd be dealing with, it'd be the city as well for that.
Refresh me if the city's CH zoning, is it more closely related to the CN that's there, or is it CS?
Commercial highway is actually more closely related to our commercial general, it's the more, the wide, more wide-open commercial zone.
I'd make a motion to approve with staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 17-A021, Melinda Trantham, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Opposition? Would you please call the roll?
Rhonda Allen? Jim Everwater? Lee Bogle? David Jones? Mike Kush? Craig Lynch? Chip Pinion? Charlotte P.? Mike Bott? Jeff Phillips?
Aye.
Pete, yes, to no?
Motion to approve carries, thank you. Item 684-17-A022, Matt Bratton, location 4513 Sulfur Springs Road, Commission District 3, the county commissioner is Will Jordan. Size of the site is approximately four acres, tax map 48. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density, proposed zoning is commercial services, CS. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The applicant, as you stated, is proposing to zone the proposed properties to commercial services. The applicant has no specific plans for the property at this time, and no concept plan was submitted along with the application. That being said, the applicant has indicated possible use as either a convenience market or possibly a storage facility. The closest non-residential, excuse me, zone property is located approximately 900 feet to the east, where there's an existing Dollar General store. Staff has fielded a number of phone calls and had several meetings regarding property around this I-840 interchange with Sulfur Springs Road, but to date, nothing has really come of any of those particular applications. Access to this property will be from Sulfur Springs Road via existing frontage roads. Those frontage roads are actually county roads and are listed in the county road book as frontage roads. Staff will require, if this is approved, a traffic study for any development proposed for this property, considering its proximity to the interchange and potential turning movements issues during, at those frontage roads. Staff will also require testing to be done on those roads to determine the ability to accommodate increased traffic. Something else I wanted to bring to your attention is, Mike, if you could bring up that, when we first were looking at this, we became aware that the property was impacted by a TVA easement. There is a map that I included with your agenda packets that does show that, this shows it a little more clearly, but you can see the three properties right there and how that easement goes right through. The line is not there, but the easement is, so, it's, you know, who knows if there'll ever be a line there, probably not, but TVA's not one to get rid of their easements. So, that's gonna have a substantial impact on the development of the property. The applicant was aware that there was an easement there, and I contacted him about this, he already was aware that it was present, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. Landscaping, this would require a type-two buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned properties, and of course, performance standards would also have to be met. This property is also located within the general urban character area, again, which does contemplate these type of uses. Sulfur Springs Road is identified as an urban arterial in the county's comprehensive plan, which will eventually be widened to a five-lane cross-section at some point in the future. Being this close to the interchange, staff is doubtful that this property will ever develop beyond what it already is, just a single-family home, if we're ever going to develop or redevelop, it would probably be something non-residentially. That being said, you can see in our staff comments that we did have concerns regarding that TVA easement, really specifically, that it's just gonna have an impact on the development. It's not that development's impossible, but it's going to restrict what can be placed on that property and how it's actually located on the property. And traffic, as stated earlier, the frontage roads were constructed by TDOT during the construction of then State Route 840, now Interstate. Determination will need to be made on the thickness of those roads and their ability to accommodate increased traffic, and again, traffic study, we wanna see that as well due to the turning movements back toward the Interstate. From a land use standpoint, we feel this is an appropriate request and would recommend approval, but we do acknowledge that there are issues that are going to impact the overall development of the site. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
That easement, Doug, going through all of that property, commercial services may be better than the residential use for that piece of property?
Right, I mean, you can put things like parking areas and things like that under TVA easements, not so much buildings and things.
Anyone have questions for staff?
Doug, do they, do they have actually road frontage on Sulfur Springs Road they can use, or do they have to access the unnamed street?
It's a little frontage road, you can see that on the map that Mike has up there, there's a small frontage road right there which actually accesses the property. They don't have direct access to Sulfur Springs Road, but then they have the Frontage Road J, which is, kinda goes north and south, and K, which is the one that really fronts, that's actually really more just a driveway is what that is, but they are maintained in the road book.
Other questions for staff? Ready for our public hearing? This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 17-A022 for Matt Bratton. Is the applicant present? Would you come forward, please? Name and address.
My name's Matt Bratton, I live at 1601 Flat Rock Road. I guess this is speculative, this is three different properties, my in-laws own two, I recently acquired one. It's just, I think it's kinda inevitable this area's gonna go to some kind of business type use, and this is gonna make up a, hopefully, we're trying to sell the property, that's what we're doing, and hopefully... property, that's what we're doing, and hopefully, this will make up a portion of my in-law's retirement.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Bratton.
Thank you.
Anyone present wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Doug, is the, is the frontage road private or public?
It's public.
It is public?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve. Set the status of comments. Motion and a second to approve. Item 17-A-022 for Matt Bratton. Other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Opposition?
No.
Motion to approve carries. Would you please note one, opposition? Item 65-17-A-023, Thoroughbred Construction by Steve Knox. Location, 4663 Epsom Hill Road. Commission District is 6. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 100 acres, and approximately three of those will be rezoned. Tax map 157. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a PUD, Planned Unit Development, and a PUD amendment. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you, and I'll explain those as we go along here, why it's an amendment as well. As you'll recall, this property should look fairly familiar. Bearded Estates was approved as a PUD, Planned Unit Development, at the Board of Commissioners' April 13, 2017 meeting. One of the conditions of the PUD approval was that a temporary emergency ingress/egress be established along with the access to Dunbar Lane, because if you recall, Dunbar Lane was the only public road that actually had frontage on that property. It kind of stubbed out into the property. So one of the conditions, again, was a temporary access along with that access to Dunbar Lane, with a permanent secondary access to be established after 80 lots, under discretion of the fire chief. Since that application was approved, the applicant has been seeking a solution to the temporary access situation. The applicant approached the neighboring property owner about establishing that temporary emergency ingress/egress point. The property owner was only willing to allow the applicant to pursue a permanent access, but not a temporary one. So the applicant's asking for the following. First, they want to rezone that 2.9 acres from RM to PUD to add an additional 14 lots to the overall PUD of Bearded Estates. Also, they'd like to amend the condition of the temporary access and add the proposed secondary access, which would be a permanent access, as part of Phase 2 of the Bearded Estates development, and that's consistent with what they're showing in the revised pattern book. That pattern book is included on your iPads tonight. The pattern book explains the development in greater detail. The additional 14 lots are proposed to be developed identically to the proposed, to the approved, excuse me, PUD of Bearded Estates. The revised pattern book would call for 181 lots, which are, again, is approximately four units to the acre. Home sizes, everything else along with that was similar or identical, really, to what was approved under the original planned development. Homes, again, would have a minimum of 10% masonry on their frontage, with all remaining areas being, having vinyl siding. There'd be four phases to this plan. Phase, each one would be about 40 homes per year, depending on market demand, but that permanent access, that secondary one, would be shown in Phase 2. So it would be kind of after the 40 lot mark is what that permanent access would be in. Again, that pattern book is included with your agenda packets and on your iPads. Does not have property, does not have direct access to Epsom Hill Road. They only have access through the Buchanan Estates subdivision. That was a point of much discussion during the original public hearings for this. The first access point would be, again, Dunbar Lane in Phase 1, and then Pinion Street, where it dead-ends, would be the Phase 2 when it was developed. You see, again, that the applicant's concept plan does show proposed connections to adjacent property along the other sides as well, and as development occurs, staff would anticipate those connections being opened as well. The traffic study, which was submitted just as kind of a refresher for you, found that all the traffic volumes, even after development, would still be within level of service A or B with this development. That was from the original Bearded Estates. Buffering would not be required. The original PUD pattern book did show the preservation of an existing tree line on the north side of this development. Staff would expect this buffer to extend to these properties. It didn't necessarily call that out, but we would expect that to be the case as well, and no other buffers are identified. Most of the comments, as you recall, we did receive at the original public hearings for this development, were in regards to the access to the property, as they only had that one access to Buchanan Estates via Dunbar Lane. This request does eliminate the temporary access requirement if the request is approved, but they do feel, and staff feels as well, that the permanent access after the first 40 lots is a reasonable compromise. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present.
Questions for staff?
Long-term, this would actually be an improvement, correct, Doug? I mean, it'd give more paid access?
Well, it's a more formal access. Right, it's a formal access point as opposed to just a temporary access point. I think the concern, because I spoke to the property owner before, she had actually given her consent to have him rezon this property, but her concern was, she didn't want to see just a temporary access there where it wasn't really monitored real well or anything like that. If you actually have homes on it, then you have kind of eyes on the street kind of a thing.
Other questions for staff? Ready for our public hearing? This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 17-A-023, Thoroughbred Construction. Is the applicant available? In here? Hello? State your name, please.
Steve Knox, 1411 Buckingham Drive. I am the person that's looking to develop this property. Like Doug said and stuff, I worked very hard off of your comments and stuff to try to get a secondary permanent entrance, and I was able to do that, but again, she won't let me do a temporary. It's in the contract that way. So I'm asking, based on what he said, if you rezone this 2.93 acres, that you will allow me to do two phases and put the secondary permanent interest in the second phase? And I'll answer any questions if you have it.
Questions for Mr. Knox? Thank you. Anyone else here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Hello?
My name is Robert Shaw. I live on the corner of Sellers Court and Rankin Drive. Rankin Drive is becoming a Speedway, and one of our concerns is the access roads that you're going to have. You've already stated that, according to the map, you wanted to come in on Pinion. There's also going to be eventually homes built on the parcel in question of that 100 acres, is that correct?
I can actually answer that question. At, right now, that property is zoned for residential purposes. It's zoned residential medium density. Could that happen in the future? It could, yes. Now, that's not what the gentleman is, the applicant's proposing. The only thing he wants to do is zone that small 2.9-acre corner in the northwest corner of the property. So the reigning property is not part of this, and if that ever comes in for development, we would just have to kind of see where that would, where that would lead from there.
Well, one of our concerns is that the access of Darcy Lane, Sellers Court, Pinion, and Dunbar is going to increase a greater volume of traffic in there.
And I understand that. Now, I will say that the fact that those streets do stub out would say to me that in the future, they may extend into that property. Now, at this point, it's hard to say because we have no development plan moving forward on that. So right now, it's going to, just going to be business as usual as far as the, as far as the development of the property. There's just, there's nothing for us to look at right now. I understand, I understand your concern as far as the possibility of traffic moving in and out of there, but there are ways to, if we were to see a master plan for that remaining 97 acres, there are ways to still extend those streets into the property, but at the same time, do it in such a way that we're not encouraging cut-through traffic. We do like, from a planning perspective, we do like to see interconnectivity, but again, right now, it's all speculative because we don't, we just don't know what's going to happen with it. When I spoke with the applicant, or the owner of the property, she didn't mention any other plans to develop this property at this point.
So that would be the only access is Pinion and Dunbar?
Correct, for this development that Mr. Knox is talking about. Those are the two access points. That is correct.
All right. And the homes in question that are going to be built, can you give me any indication what the prices are going to be? $150 and above? $180 and above? All right. All right. And that'll be the same standard house that's built in Buchanan Estates? I can't hear him.
I think you said size-wise, yes, but I'm, I'm kind of guessing. Is that what you said, Steve, besides what? Yeah, he's nodding yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning into a PUD for the permanent road access that we discussed in the earlier meetings. I think this would satisfy what we're after and correct the situation with the one road.
Motion to approve and a second. Other questions?
I just wanted to commend the developer and owners for doing what they've, they've exceeded our request for that second access and provided something more permanent that I think will last a lot longer, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Comment. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve. Item 17-A-023, Thoroughbred Construction. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Staff reports or other business, Doug?
I don't have anything. Mike, did you have any? No, we're good.
Anyone? Good meeting. Thank you for your attendance and your participation. We are adjourned.